It is seven o'clock. It's the time and place set aside for the meeting of the Montclair City Council for July 18, 2012. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll call? Are they, no, call to order? I'm sorry. For the City Council Supervisor, Successor Agency, Montclair Housing Corporation, Montclair Housing Authority Commission, Montclair Community Foundation Board. That brings us to our invocation this evening. Tonight it will be led by our fire chaplain, Alan Almos.
Thank you, Mayor. Give this time over to the Lord. Dear Father in heaven, I thank you. We collectively, the City of Montclair, from the council, from the city employees, from people that are developers and everybody attributing to the betterment of this city and the citizens that are here, dear God, we ask and we pray that you give us the wisdom, the discernment, the understanding and all that lays before us, dear God, for the betterment of all outcomes for Montclair. I thank you and I praise you for this time and I pray for just wisdom and discernment for all those in concern that are going to be speaking and those that are listening and understanding what is being brought forth. We thank you for this time in your son's name, Lord Jesus Christ.
And our flag sleeve will be led tonight by Councilmember Denise Johnson.
Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
First, I would like to state for the record that Mayor Dutray has been excused and will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number five A, our Community Activities Commission presentation of the 2022 Home Beautification Awards. As part of Montclair's ongoing efforts to encourage pride and community spirit, the Montclair Community Activities Commission has sponsored an annual home beautification program. This is something we do yearly. At this time, I would like to introduce Community Activities Chairperson Diane Wells, and she will be announcing tonight's winners. Madam Commissioner, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ru. For the past 27 years, the Community Activities Commission has sponsored the home beautification program to recognize Montclair residents who demonstrate their community pride through the upkeep and maintenance of their homes. This year, 17 homes were nominated by members of the Community Activities Commission. There were two judging categories, traditional landscape and drought tolerant landscape. One winner was selected in each category. We will be showing you a PowerPoint presentation of our winning homes accompanied by a brief description. As you will see, the winners should be very proud of the work they have done to maintain their homes and property. Each winner will receive a frame certificate and a gift card to a Montclair restaurant or business of their choice. Later, they will also receive a sign to be placed in their front yard announcing their award. Our first honored winners are Martha and Jose Luis Barrios, whose home is located at 4935 Denver Street. As past winners of the 2010 Home Beautification Awards, these homeowners are obviously dedicated to maintaining a lovely and inviting residence. The exterior of the home is reminiscent of a floral garden. As you approach the home, you are greeted by a vibrant green lawn and a pathway of flowers. A perfectly paved walkway outlined with red bricks and surrounded by African lilies, pink roses, white garden petunias, and colorful New Guinea impatiens lead you to a large luxuriant tree with dreamy white blossoms. The addition of decorative accents like, excuse me, such as the pathway lights, ceramic animals, a cascading wall fountain, and bright white corner fences add personality to the property. In addition to the gorgeous greenery and decorative accents, the open front yard also features a luscious green tree generating ample shade and abundant variety of colorful flowers and various plants. Congratulations to the Barrios family for winning the 2022 Traditional Home of the Year Award.
And if the Barrios family would please come forward and my council colleagues, please join me in front. We award this to the Community Activities Commission and the City of Montclair the Home of the Year Award. Everything is done.
Your home is lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, great. Our second honored winner is Tina and Mike Shelton, whose home is located at 10120 Montavista, also known as the Garden of Hope. This peach colored property on the corner of Montavista Avenue and Orchard Street is surrounded by a beautiful ranch style wooden fence and perfectly trimmed bushes and gravel. The Sheltons began the Garden of Hope in 2016 to bring beauty and encouragement to a close friend with Lou Gehrig's disease. The Sheltons reached out to 25 friends, coworkers, and neighbors to sponsor a garden feature, therefore demonstrating that strangers will come together in a time of need to help spread care, encouragement, and good health. The cement sidewalk that leads to the front door is accented on both sides by bushes and rocks along with a sign that reads, "It's your day, it's your choice." To further boost the curb appeal, the home features decorative white rose bushes and fence posts dedicated to the garden sponsors Tina and Mike have gained over the years. Located right behind the rose bushes is a river of blue and gray pebbles that lead to a rustic rock fountain. Smooth concrete benches and a wooden shade structure arches on the right side of the house and reads, "Garden of Hope." Decorative ladybugs adorn the wooden fence, adding a spot of color and a sense of playfulness. The remainder of the yard is a drought tolerant dream. Lining the fence and circling the property are beds of well-kept bushes, a small wooden bridge, and a metal wagon wheel. Congratulations Tina and Mike Shelton for winning the 2022 Drought Resistant Home of the Year Award.
This morning, you didn't have a camera. She ordered me to go back and take pictures of it. So let's hope even 10% of those people who saw that and said they would do something will go home and actually do something. And then, of you old enough to know Paul Harvey and the rest of the story kind of the thing, okay, this is for your bedtime reading.
I'm saving myself by admitting I've.
There's a whole lot more to this story if you believe in the passion of total strangers and coming together.
Shelton, did I believe the phone that was on the receiving end of a bad car accident that flipped and damaged your property?
In January.
I buy South Montavista almost every morning. You guys rebounded rather quickly.
You called five months quickly. He complains every day how long it took.
It seemed rather quickly, but considering the incident that happened there in the, it's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful.
On behalf of the dozens and dozens and dozens of people who helped out, participated in one.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of our winners for the annual home beautification program. Your hard work is evident in the appearance of your home. And in addition, thank you to all the residents who have contributed to the beautification of Montclair in one way or another, be it with your time, your treasure, or your talent. You're all contributing to the betterment and the beauty of this city. Your dedication is what helps to make Montclair a great city in which to live, work, and play. Thank you. That brings us to item number six, public comment. Madam City Clerk, are there any cards for public comment or anybody in queue virtually?
Yes, Carolyn Raft would like to speak on Zoom and then Bruce Colt.
Okay.
Hold on, I lost Carolyn.
Excuse me, four more Councilmember Raft, you'll have five minutes. Welcome.
Okay, Carolyn, can you?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I, congratulations to the winners. Both places are beautiful and especially, I've been keeping an eye on the one that's right there on Montavista, and I've noticed it over the years, and those people did a great job. I brought it to your attention a couple of months ago that Vector Control had put in for a grant to buy, in case we got the grant, to buy sterile male mosquitoes so they could be integrated with the females so that eventually, hopefully, that the, because the females are the ones that bite. And so therefore that we would eventually weed out and kill off the biting ones that, so hopefully that we don't have that problem as far as the viruses in the past and in the future. But San Bernardino also applied, so Vector Control did withdraw their grant because we felt it wasn't right for both of us to apply because of the limitation of the funds. So therefore, hopefully that they do follow through. And I was informed this week that on Lehigh and Kingsley, we do have infected mosquitoes. So if you have a chance, if you're in that area, do please be aware, okay? Also, last time you had your council meeting, I raised my hand, but I guess nobody could see that I raised it because I wanted to comment on the roundabout that you guys are doing on Ramona and on the street there for, it's, that's been, I think, past due for a long time. I'm so glad to see you guys are doing that because there's been so many accidents there on Ramona and Howard. So, and those roundabouts are becoming very popular. I've seen them in some of the other cities and I know overseas they're very popular. So hopefully that will now just get rid of some of the problems that's been going on, so there won't be any more deaths or any more accidents in that area. So thank you very much for doing it. I know we were talking about it at one time when I was on the council and I'm so glad to see it came about. So thank you so very much, and that's all I have to say for now. I will bring things forward hopefully in the future as far as hopefully what's happening with this mosquito as far as the sterile males so that it will come about that, see what happens, okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate you acknowledging me.
Thank you. And next in queue is?
Bruce Colt.
Okay. Mr. Colt, you will have five minutes.
Thank you. I saw that the election for 2022 is open up now, July 18 through August 2nd, I guess, for people to register for the election or whatever. And I saw Ms. Martinez is on the, up for election this year. I wish you the best, you know, I'll be voting for you. Mayor Dutray, I know he's not here today, but I look forward to supporting him as well. Mr. Ru, if I can get you on board on the cannabis, you might have my support. I know you do a lot of great work on the gold mine as well, so candidates, I wish you all the best and, you know, in this next election, I wish Mr. Lopez was on the election cycle this year so we could get him voted out for his sexual harassment of employees, but we'll just have to wait a couple more years to get him out. And that brings me up to, you know, I just saw in Ontario that they're starting to work on districting for their council members. And I'm not sure if anybody on the council right now lives above the 10 freeway unless I'm mistaken, but we must be severely underrepresented here north of the 10 freeway unless I'm mistaken on that. If there's anybody, may please correct me. But it sounds like, seems like all the surrounding cities are going, moving towards council districts, and I think it would be good for Montclair, especially this northern part where you're making a lot of decisions and supporting a lot of the developers and businesses, but us residents seem to be completely underrepresented. Case in point, this public item today about the apartment complex, and I'll be speaking this, about this more on that item, but the, you know, the public notice on that was lacking significantly. And so, you know, there's thousands of residents that live within 200 feet of that place that are, have no idea what's going to happen, and we have many issues related to the high density that nobody on the council seems to want to address. And so maybe it's a good time now to start thinking about, you know, council districts so that there's somebody up here that will represent the, not just the property owners, not just the developers, not just the business owners, but us residents that have to endure, you know, increasing traffic. Nobody's doing anything to reduce the speeds on these many freeways of Arrow Highway, Monte Vista, Central, Marino, even though you guys are trying to make this a walkable community, I don't see any families trying to cross those streets at any time of the day. And so that needs to be addressed. So anyways, best of luck to all the candidates, and I'll be speaking at the public item. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number seven, a public hearing, consider adoption of resolution number 22-3372, amending the master user fee schedule to provide clarification of an existing in-lu fee for inclusionary housing. And the second part of that is to consider adoption of number, of resolution number 22-367, making findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and approving a precise plan of design for a proposed 137-unit residential apartment project within the North Montclair Downtown specific plan on 2.85 acres at the southwest corner of Arrow and Montavista. So item number A, public hearing, who will be handling that one?
I will be handling that, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Ru. So as council is aware, jurisdictions throughout California, including Montclair, have adopted inclusionary housing ordinances requiring developers to ensure that a certain percentage of housing units in new developments be affordable to moderate and low-income households. Alternatively, other options have been available, including contributing an in-lu fee to an affordable housing account. In Montclair, inclusionary housing rules applied to developments of 10 or more units and were applicable to both for-sale and rental units. However, in 2009, in Palmer Six Street Properties LP versus City of Los Angeles, a California appellate court undermined inclusionary housing as applied to rental housing units, arguing the requirement was in conflict with the 1995 Costa Hawkins Act, which allowed landlords to set the initial rent for new rental units and increase the rent to market levels upon vacancy. Following, Palmer municipalities throughout California, including Montclair, ceased applying inclusionary housing rules to the construction of new rental units, and the ruling placed a chilling effect on the enforcement of other provisions of including housing ordinance components. At the time the Palmer decision was handed down, Montclair assessed an inclusionary housing in-lu fee of $15,400 per unit that developers could elect to pay instead of constructing affordable housing units within their project. Developers universally opt for the in-lu fee instead of providing affordable housing units within their projects because the in-lu fee is economically viable and far less costly than the per-unit construction cost for an affordable housing unit. In fact, current market rates project that the construction of affordable housing unit is approximately $430,000, equivalent to the cost of construction of a market rate unit. Under California Building Association versus City of San Jose, the California Supreme Court in 2020 ruled that inclusionary housing requirements are enforceable and a constitutionally legitimate means to address the state's growing housing problem. The San Jose decision followed the implementation of AB 1505, which reversed the 2009 Palmer decision. AB 1505 authorizes cities and counties to reinstate their inclusionary housing requirements for both for-sale and rental housing units. Under AB 1505, local jurisdictions may require that as a condition of development, a certain percentage of units to be affordable or low, affordable to lower or moderate income households, including very low and extremely low income households. AB 1505 also requires that inclusionary housing ordinances must provide alternative means for compliance, such as the in-lu fees that we've discussed already, land dedication, off-site construction or acquisition and rehabilitation of existing units. Each of those components have been included in Montclair's housing ordinance that was adopted in 2005. In order to bring Montclair's inclusionary housing ordinance, which is ordinance number 05-866, into compliance with the purpose and intent of AB 1505, the City Council is asked to consider adoption of resolution number 22-3372. This resolution would amend the master user fee schedule to reincorporate the inclusionary housing in-lu fee of $15,400 for rental projects. That fee, which was, which was included in the City Council's 2005 adoption of the inclusion, of the inclusionary housing ordinance, was stripped again from the fee schedule following the 2009 Palmer decision. Upon, under the proposed resolution number 22-3372, the inclusionary housing, the inclusionary housing in-lu fees would apply for both rental and for-sale units. Under fiscal impact, adopting resolution number 22-3372 would revise the master user fee schedule. It would reinstate the city's $15,400 per unit inclusionary housing, housing in-lu fee for rental developments, and again, that fee is already assessable against for-sale units in the City of Montclair. Amending the master user fee schedule to include the in-lu for rental developments would have a positive impact on the city's ability to construct affordable housing projects. As the City Council is aware, the city has had an extensive history in its efforts to construct affordable housing projects in the City of Montclair. We have a number of developments in the city that include projects that we worked on with various vendors, including National Community Renaissance. Council is also aware that the city had a relationship with Augusta Communities to provide affordable housing units at mobile home parks in the City of Montclair. With the recent repayment of $3.2 million by Augusta Communities to the City of Montclair that has now provided seed money for the City of Montclair to move forward on the construction development of affordable housing projects, council is aware that, again, prior to, or back in 2012, when the state of California eliminated community redevelopment agencies and the 20% set aside, cities throughout California lost the ability to construct affordable housing. Money was taken away from the affordable housing funds by the state of California and moved to other purposes. So there has been very little in the way of affordable housing projects that have been constructed in the City of Montclair. So again, the $3.2 million that the city recently received as payback from Augusta Communities provides us a significant amount of money to move forward, including the $15,400 as recommended in the resolution. For rental units, we'll provide additional funding so that the city can again move forward with the development of affordable housing projects. Recommendation from staff is that the City Council adopt resolution number 22-3372, amending the master user fee schedule as indicated.
Excuse me. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is open for anyone who wishes to make a comment on it. Do we have anybody in the audience who is planning to make a presentation? Okay. Do we have any, before I get into council comments, any comments from the, oh, excuse me, I'll do the council comments first. Do any of the council members wish to comment? Councilmember Johnson? And then Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. One of the things that I'm most proud of here in the City of Montclair, and I talk about it frequently, is that when you're driving down the street here in Montclair, you can't tell who's who. So one house, in one house, there might be millionaires, and then in the house next to them could be a very low-income person, and the house next to them could be moderate. You can't tell where the rich folks are or where the poor folks are. We are all together in a community, and we have, as Mr. Starr said, we have a long history of making sure that low and, low and moderate income people have a place to live that they can afford, but it's not off on the other side of someplace undesirable as we're all in it together, and I'm really very proud of that in our community. I understand that, you know, the builders have to do what they do, but I do really believe that a small percentage at least should be for those people. Everybody should be able to live here. It shouldn't just be for this, the City of Montclair should not just be for people who make, who can afford a $700,000 house. I was shocked to find out that there was a house a one block from me that was for sale for $750,000, and I had to go down there to see what does a $750,000 house in Montclair looks like. And so I went down there, and you know what it looked like? My house. It's not a mansion, it's just a simple, modest little home. So, and, and the people who are working, you know, at low income, if they're making less than $50,000 a year, how are they going to afford that? Where, where do they live? They have to go somewhere far away, out in the desert somewhere, and then the cost of gas, how are they going to get back and forth to work? And we wonder why there's so many for sales, for hire signs. So I, you know, while again, I understand the builder's position, but I think affordable housing in this town is critical for our overall well-being. housing in this town is critical for our overall well-being. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Question to the city manager, based off of the staff report. At the time, the city had the inclusionary housing in-lu fee of $15,400, I believe that you said it was, in the report, was around 2005?
2005 is when the original inclusionary housing ordinance was adopted by the city council.
What amount at that time, on average, was generated from the in-lu fees?
I'd have to go back and do research on that, I can't give you an answer right now.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair. There is a line in the actual resolution, it's the third whereas, it says, whereas there is a need for the city of Montclair to recoup reasonable costs related to the provisions of specified services. So, the money that, the fees paid by developers, the $15,400, it, does it go into a specified account that is solely used for services that are required at the development site? Or is it general fund money that gets spread throughout the city based on need?
No, this money would go into the city's Affordable Housing Fund, which is controlled by the Economic Development Agency. It would be used exclusively for the construction of affordable housing. It would not go for any other purpose, would not go for salaries, benefits, or any other costs. It would exclusively be directed towards the construction of affordable housing projects.
Okay, I understood it wouldn't go to salaries or staffing issues. I was concerned about, of course, with every development, there is an increased level of demand for police and fire services, as an example, code enforcement, abatement of graffiti, et cetera, et cetera. I was wondering if those, if those funds could be used for those services, but based on your answer, they cannot, they're only...
Well, no, so, let's be clear. This is not Redevelopment Agency money. So, back before the elimination of community redevelopment agencies in 2012, the, under state law, under community redevelopment law, the 20% set aside, which was mandated by community redevelopment law, that money had to exclusively go for affordable housing. It could not be used for any other purpose. We're not controlled or restricted any longer by the community redevelopment agency laws because of the fact that community redevelopment, redevelopment agencies have been eliminated. Our practice and the direction from the city council is that these funds would go exclusively into the Economic Development Agency. Yes, they are general fund dollars, and yes, they could be used for other purposes, but our practice and our policy will be that they will go into the Economic Development Agency into a fund set aside exclusively for the purpose of affordable housing projects.
I'm pleased to hear that, thank you for that. Now, final question. You might have to pull prior stats then. How many in the past have opted out and just paid the fee? Did we have, did most developers at that time just opt out to pay the fee, exempt themselves from the requirements?
I, I would say that 100% would opt to pay towards the in-lu fee, simply because it is economically more viable for them.
Sure, okay, that's, that's what I kind of figured, I just wanted confirmation of that. Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I will, before I go into any public comments, I will make a comment of my own. I've been on this council since 1998 and have always advocated for affordable housing, both ownership and rental. In fact, at times, I've stood alone on the issue. In many ways, I feel I still stand alone. The proof is in production. If we want affordable housing in this city, we're going to do it. It's going to be ownership and rental as well. You can't rent somewhere and then disappear to another city. We need every tool we can. I believe there are different types of building designs and styles that we can use to create that affordability. There are non-traditional styles that we can use. I won't go into all of that tonight, it's, I will at another meeting. I do have a very difficult situation with inclusionary zoning because I feel it does just the opposite, it thwarts affordable housing. When you're asking a developer to put in $15,400 per unit, it just makes those market-rate units $15,400 more expensive, driving more people out of the housing market, not bringing more in. I think the solution to the future is for staff and everybody else to work more closely with developers to see what we can do to bring in a more affordable product. Those are my thoughts on this. I will now open it up to the public. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody in the public who has sent in a card who wishes to speak this evening?
I do not have any cards. I did see there was a hand momentarily on Zoom, but I don't know if that person wants to speak any longer.
I will ask for that in a moment. Is there anybody in the public who does wish to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, is there anybody in our virtual situation?
Yes, I do now see a hand from Carolyn Raft.
Yes, go ahead, Carol, and you'll have five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I took my hand off, but I guess it didn't, didn't, didn't recognize it, as usual. I'm having fun with my iPad. No, I had no comments on it, I was just happy to see it happen, that's all.
Thank you, Carolyn. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this in the virtual world?
Okay, I see no other ones.
Okay. I will then bring the, I will then bring this back to the council for any last comments, and then a motion if you believe it is appropriate. Mr. Mayor, I will move the, Mr. Mayor Protem, sorry, I will move the item as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by councilmember Lopez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Johnson, and madam city clerk, we will... Motion passes, four yes, one abstention. Thank you. That brings us...
One absent.
Absent, absent. What? Absent, not abstention. That's what the city clerk was saying.
Yes, absent.
One absent and four yes. That brings us to item number B, under public hearing, consider adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash three-three-six-seven, making findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and appointing, approving a precise plan of design for a proposed 137-unit residential apartment project with a North Montclair Specific Plan on 2.85 acres at the southwest corner of Arrow Highway and Monte Vista. And who is handling?
Mayor Protem Ru, we do have a PowerPoint presentation on this, and I'm going to allow Community Development Director Mike Diaz to do the introductions and the initial presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem Ru and fellow council members. Trammell Crowe Residential is seeking approval tonight of what will be their third residential project in the city. More importantly, all of their projects have been in the North Montclair Downtown District Specific Plan area, or downtown specific area. And, and as your report indicates, this project will be an expansion of the, the existing Alexon Kendry project, which won an award for their industry that deals with housing and design. In 2020, 2021, the project was constructed and built in 2020, and is immediately south of the project site that we're talking about tonight. The 2.85-acre site is, as you know, is at the southwest corner of Arrow Highway and Monte Vista Avenue. And prior to 2017, this area was not located, it was outside of the current boundaries now of the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan. But in 2017, the 10 acres that basically make up this corner on Arrow Highway and Monte Vista were added to the boundaries under a update for the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan, which included this area, the Turner Specific Plan area, as well as updated standards, after about 10 years of the, of the previous and original North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan being in effect. So, what came on the heels of that was the, the project Alexon Kendry, which was built down there, off of Monte Vista, off of Cypress Street, and rounding the corner a little bit on Magnolia there. And what was left was this 2.85-acre site on the corner. If approved tonight, this expansion will complete basically the, all the improvements that can be done on that corner, and is a major achievement for advancing the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan area. The, it's important that you'll know that everything comes up to the street now, and it's in keeping with the, and consistent with the specific plan regulations and concepts. I'm not saying a whole lot about the project right now because I know that the property, or the developer wants to make a presentation for you more directly. But as with all previous projects in the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan area, the city council is the final review and authority, approval authority. The Planning Commission did look at the item at their June 27, 2022 meeting, and they reviewed the project, and by a five-zero vote, recommended that the city council approve the plans when they came forward to you tonight. The project before each night requires approval of a precise plan and design, there is no map involved with this, it just, there will be some lot consolidation done through the means of a lot merger, and the request, more importantly, the developer is not asking for any reductions in the parking that's required, otherwise required by the specific plan. They'll go through that particular account here in a minute, and you'll see the table. The table was also provided in your staff report to indicate how they met the required parking. This is a unique project, it's tailored-made for this particular site, they'll describe that to yield a little more detail in a, in a, in a minute, but it's a good project because of what it looks like. As the staff report put, put it, I wrote it, but, but put it basically was that initially, the entire project site of 10 acres was hoped to be developed at one time, but as a result of some other changes and property, certain property owners not being ready to go forward, this corner was maintained the way it is until today. What that did was allow the architect and staff to work on something that is a little more unique for the corner, and also the ability to tie in the project with the existing development that is there. So, there's some tie to it, and there's also some very much different components on this project, as you will see. So, this evening, as I mentioned earlier, the developer wants to make a presentation to the council, so that they can, so I want to take this interview, this moment to make a introduction for Mr. Alex Schiffer and Mr. Reese Peterson, who are from Trammell Crowe Residential. They have their architect here, and then one of their consultants that helped put together this initial plan, Mr. Chris Henshaw. The architect is Chris Windholf. After the presentation, staff and the developer will be available to answer any questions you might have about the project. And so, without further delay, I'm going to let Reese Peterson come to the mic and make his presentation.
Thank you, Michael Diaz. Good evening, council. My name is Reese Pedersen, and I'm here as a representative for Trammell Crowe Residential. Trammell Crowe Residential is the longest-standing and most prolific apartment development company in the country. While our organization develops across the nation, the principles of the Southern California Division and its employees are all local. We own and build with our own in-house construction company, and we plan to own this project I am presenting tonight, long-term, with our partner. Since 2011, our organization has had the opportunity to work with staff to deliver award-winning projects within the city. The same team presenting you this deal today is the same team that constructed Alexon Kendry, the Paseos at Montclair North, which was the first North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan residential project. Alexon Kendry, our second development, and also within the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan, was awarded the 2021 Golden Nugget Multi-Family Community of the Year Award for four stories and above. Michael, can you go to the next slide, please? Nope, right here? Excellent, thank you. The project I am presenting tonight is an extension of that award-winning project and shares the same design team. Over the past two years, our consultant team and I have coordinated with city staff and the city's third-party architect reviewer, Mool and Paul Zoides, to shape the project you will vote on tonight. This project is unique because this project was designed to be an extension of our existing Kendry. We originally wanted to include this land area when planning Kendry, but were unable to acquire the land. After constructing Alexon Kendry, we had the opportunity to go back and work with this owner to purchase land and propose this expansion. The 211-unit existing development, Alexon Kendry, was completed in 2020 and was designed with a combination of styles, modern agrarian and farmhouse, setting the overall architectural tone for this proposed expansion. Since the two developments will be operated as one apartment community when completed, the new building's architecture style should be very harmonious and compatible with the existing development. However, due to its size, its frontage along Monte Vista Ave and Arrow Highway, and its visibility at the intersection, it was important that the architectural style of expansion was not an exact copy to provide for a more interesting streetscape and to meet the intent of the specific plan, which envisioned smaller developments and block sizes that looked to be built over longer periods of time. Alexon Kendry was designed with similar styles as the original, such as modern farmhouse and modern agrarian, but applied with its own unique colors, window patterns, massing articulation, and material transitions. The four-story massing stepping down to two stories as it marches south to help reduce the apparent scale of the building, and it was designed with physical gaps along Arrow Highway to allow a small view corridor into the main courtyard. The Kendry expansion has been designed to be both unique when compared to the other adjacent multifamily communities nearby, and fitting within the style of single-family homes to the south of the site, which were built in a more traditional style using similar materials. The project we're presenting tonight is consistent with the specific plan and the environmental studies which were conducted. Our zoning and density falls within the specific plan, and also our parking meets the requirements. We are not asking for any reductions or variances. With staff, we prepared a categorical consistency that looked at the environmental impacts of this project and found that there were no additional supplemental or subsequent analysis required. Our project was essentially, the city engaged DUDAC to prepare the SEQA and consistency memorandum, and the consistency memorandum concluded that the Alexon Kendry project, which you will vote on tonight, is within the scope of the prior supplemental EIR. As I mentioned in my introduction, this Kendry expansion will be built on the north corner of the existing development. This project will share amenities and share leasing office with the existing development. We are working with the same design team that we worked on Alexon Kendry, and proposed these projects to work harmonious as one community. This is a zoomed-in view of the private open space that we'll have on our amenity deck. So, this sits on top of the parking garage, this is unique for the city of Montclair, as this is a podium-style project. Our other projects are what we would consider garden-style projects, where the residential units sit on the ground floor in their surface parking. This is unique, as that, since we're doing an expansion, we had limited site area, we were able to propose a, a structured garage with residential units on top of it. As we get into this presentation, I'll show you how that was feasible, the slight had, the site had a slope, which allowed us to do that. We're using, as I said, the same landscape designer, EPT, and architect, ADC, and so I have some narrative imagery here to give you an idea and feel of what the community will feel like. The first photo is the Monte Vista Avenue elevation, so you will see that we have, from the north to south, the site is sloping down. The garage component is actually underneath the residential units in a concrete structure, which is shielded from the street. And then the next elevation you see is Arrow Highway. As you see, the buildings are separated by a courtyard in the middle, and on the corner of Monte Vista and Arrow Highway, we worked really hard with a third-party design team and with city staff to create something that gives the, the corner a commercial feel and activates the street. And so, there's actually amenity spaces programmed on these corners versus residential units that would be on, on, on the intersection. The top elevation is Magnolia Avenue. You can see on the right side of that elevation, which would be the south side of our building, we have an entrance to our parking garage. This is the shared street with Alexon Kendry. We do not have any, all of our parking is essentially underneath the residential that we're proposing here. And then the south elevation, this, it's, you, you don't really see this from the street because this is where our project abuts Kendry, but I wanted to show you guys so you can see how the massing and articulation works. So, we have these two-story units that are on the south side of our project, so this would be our south elevation that abuts where our current amenity and pool courtyard is. You can see here how the proposed expansion differs in design. You can see here how the proposed expansion differs in design. You have Alexa Kendry that is on the left side of the image, and on the right side, you have the, the proposed expansion. And this is running along Mona Vista Avenue. So in conclusion, this is an expansion of award-winning Alexa Kendry, is consistent and conforms with the provisions of the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan. It is consistent with the North Montclair Downtown Plan SEQA analysis. It brings 137 new market rate rental units to help with the California Housing Accountability Act, and revitalizes a main intersection with active uses by an award-winning design team and developer. Thank you for your time today, and I have my consultant here, teams here to answer any questions you might have.
Before I open the public hearing, I would ask the council if they have any questions to please indicate so. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proppetem. I don't have a question, but I have a glaring shout of praise for you. One of the challenges that we have had in this city is parking. And you said the magic G-word, and I got very excited when I heard there's a garage. Not only is there a garage, but there's a, a public space on the roof. How wonderful is that? Kudos to you or whoever designed it. That is a fabulous thing. We have sometimes here in the city, we've had people almost at fisticuffs over parking. But here, you have already provided that, and it's not going to be on the street. It's going to be unseen. So kudos to you and the team for that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, we're very excited about this project and being able to put a garage here. There is one thing that I'd like to clarify is that on top of that garage, that space is just for our residents. That's not public space, so that will be separated, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you so much.
I understood that. I probably didn't articulate it correctly, but I'm envisioning if I live there and I wanted to be out, I want, my husband and I want to go have a glass of wine outside. We're going to go on the roof, right?
Yes, yeah, you're going to go, yes, exactly. You're going to go to the common areas that are, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Next in queue, Councilmember Lopez.
I was kind of thinking the same thing and reading over the material provided to us in the staff report. There's going to be a total of 206 parking spaces for 107, 137 dwelling units, guest parking of 34 spaces. I was trying, I thought I read in the report that there was going to be a partially submerged parking structure. Did I read that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. So our residential units sit on the top, and as the site slopes, we had, and my architects here, they can explain it much better than me, so, but as the site slopes, we had to create a flat deck. And so the garage is partially subterranean, so that on the south side of the site, is it exposed, but at the north side of the site, it's at street level, so it's subterranean.
Okay, I, I was trying to visualize that, so I appreciate the clarification on that. When I saw that this was on the agenda, I immediately thought of Alexa Kendry. So I went by there a couple days ago, and I've been there many times. I've had friends that have lived there, and I've met residents that have wanted to talk about whatever issues they, they might be, and I've driven with police officers there on patrol. The streets are tight. A concern that I have, let me back up. We had a former planning commissioner whose issue was water. Whenever a development came in, he was concerned about where the water was going to come and go. And for me, I mean, it's known in the city that for me, when it comes to developments, I always bring up the issue of fire apparatus being able to go in and out with relative ease. I was not on the council at the time, but Alexa Kendry was approved. I was told at that time, though, that there is some concern with respect to fire apparatus or engines being able to go in and have a 10-foot clearance on each side of the engine to sustain their outriggers in the event that they had to put a two-story, three-story fire. They need that, those outriggers to sustain the engine so it doesn't wobble while it was pressurized. Are your internal streets in this structure able to accommodate such a thing in the event that there is a need for fire service?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The original Alexa Kendry was built with the roadwits to the requirements of the specific plan, and we've learned on the other projects that we're working on in the city of Montclair that we might need to make those a little bit wider, and we've made that change. On this project, we're not proposing any new internal streets, since it does go to the property boundary, so there will be no, no change to, to that. But we do, the way that this site works, where you have access to Mona Vista, Arrow, and Magnolia, the whole, the hose pull lengths have all been run by the fire department, and they've already reviewed our plans.
Okay, I appreciate that, and thank you for doing that and running it by them. That, that means a lot. It shows that you're demonstrating due diligence and prudence on your end, and I appreciate that. Is, is the 1.5 part, I'll take off my glasses so I can read, spaces per unit, does that tend to be an industry standard on these type of developments?
So on a project like this, we're, we're not building to sell, just to sell the project. We're building to own it and operate it long-term. So we really focus on our existing developments and what the, the demand is, and that's exactly what we park this to. So, so the answer to your question is yes. Well, that's why we didn't ask for a reduction, because we want to park this to where we think the adequate demand's going to be.
Yeah, I, I was concerned about parking as well, but I was more at ease when I heard there was a parking structure, and that kind of, you know, takes, utilizes cubic space, if you will, instead of just utilizing surface street space. And of course, that's more limited, so I appreciate that. Overall, I think it's a great project. Thank you for bringing it forward. I, I hope it is successful in a, in a, in the grand scheme of things, long-term, and I hope the residents that live there in the future enjoy it. This tends not to be my type of thing, right, to want to live. I just, I like the old-style core housing in the city of Montclair. I'm more traditional in that sense, but I believe the demographic that tends to live in these is a little bit younger than myself, so that's fine. I hope they enjoy it, but thank you for bringing it forward, and appreciate your long-term investment in the city.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. The one thing I would like to add to is that as we're going through and working on this project, we still got to go through our construction documents, and one of our requirements is actually to prepare a parking management plan, which staff has ultimate approval over. And so we put together a draft, but we have some refining to do, so staff will have the final kind of say of how we're managed, you know, looking at our parking management plan so that we don't have any parking issues.
I, I just, part of the disincentive for someone like me to want to live in a development like this, not that I'm knocking it, I mean, it's, it's designed for people that have an interest in it, and it's great, is the one and a half parking spaces for every four units, or is that for the guests? That's for the guests.
That's for the guests, that's correct.
I, you know, my grandmother lives in a similar development in Upland, and there's just always a, a hard fight for parking for guests, and sometimes you gotta utilize spaces or, or share spaces or whatnot. No one drives one and a half cars, and I know that these developments are not designed for families that have multiple cars. This isn't the 1950s and 60s anymore, where a family of four or 3.5, you know, members have one car. Everybody has a car these days. So for folks that have multiple cars, such a development is not, not designed for you. But those, again, those folks that are on limited budgets, that are looking to downsize because they're forced to, perhaps this is something that they could afford. I don't know, I'm not in that situation, but again, like I said, I appreciate it, and here to support you guys on the, on the project.
Thank you for your comments.
Welcome.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, thank you. The architecture is beautiful, and if the final project looks like this, that would be fantastic. One thing that catches my eye is on page seven, you have the imagery of the, what would look to be the courtyard area, where people can walk outside, get some fresh air, maybe have lunch, and it looks to be a, a very inviting area. Is, I'm trying to understand, is this, on the previous page, number six, would that be located where the light green 11 is shown?
So, slide seven is just a conceptual to give you an idea of feel. These are not actual renderings of how our project is going to be delivered. And so these are photos from other projects, inspiration, as you could say. So our landscape design team has worked on some of these projects, and so as you go back to slide six, that's trying, trying to give you an idea of how the spaces are going to look and feel. They're not exactly how they're going to be proposed.
Okay, so is, slide six, is this showing the entire project, or is this the expansion?
This is just the expansion.
Okay. I, I would love to see that there is a place for people to, you know, dining tables outside, places to walk around, just, you know, sort of like the, the photos on page seven, so that it's a more inviting place for the residents to feel like they have a safe place to walk around and invite company over and that sort of thing. Conceptually, it's absolutely gorgeous. I think it's going to be a wonderful project.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comment. The number-one focus that we have when we originally start working on this project is what do the residents want? And so every time we finish a project, we do a resident survey where we invite guests to come in and give their comments, ask questions, we get feedback, and we try to, to learn lessons. And one of the biggest things that we learn every time is how important these common area spaces are, the grilling spaces, places where, where people can sit down at a table and maybe work outside, since people are working from home more. And so that courtyard space that, that we have, while it may look small on slide six, we will have areas for that. So in the middle and number 11, there'll, that'll be a, a very nice welcoming area. We'll have barbecues, hangout areas. And then on the southwest side, we have a stairwell that goes down to an existing green space that's in Kendry that residents can enjoy if they want to, if they want to leave the expansion project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, one more follow-up that I had forgotten. The, the property on the northernmost part of this parcel, the businesses there, the carpet store, Ray May Plumbing and all that, the owners of that property finally came to terms and amicably agreed to sell, or what was the situation? Because I think they were holdouts for a while.
That's correct. So there's one owner that owns this where the land that we're proposing redevelopment. We did previously try to buy this from them, but we're not successful in our, in our talks. And so this was unique, is that typically when, when there's a holdout parcel, we're not able to come back and redevelop it. But since we had enough land area here, and we felt that we could properly integrate these new units into the existing Kendry, it was a unique opportunity for us to come back. And so we were able to work with this landowner to, to have time to propose these new improvements. So we have not bought this land yet. We're under escrow to purchase it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Before I open the public portion of the meeting, I would like to say that I appreciate the variety in style. It provides visual distinction. If you are driving or walking down a street, nothing is more boring than to see everything the same size, shape, the same setbacks. If you think of some of the great streets in the world, the Bois de Boulon in Paris, the Viveneto in Rome, Barclay Square in London, and then closer to home, we can look at Michigan Avenue in Chicago, Fifth Avenue, Park Avenue in New York. Even if you go into the LA area, some of the areas around Santa Monica with buildings are different heights, different styles, different shapes. It creates distinction when you're walking. It provides almost visual relief. You see something different. When you're driving, it doesn't all look the same. It provides distinction. So I really do appreciate looking at that, because it is important in the future to see how these will continue to be something that looks attractive, not today, tomorrow, but 50 years from now. And certainly, we can see buildings we all love that are 50, 100 years old, that look as if they were built yesterday, they're just timeless. So I think this design will do that. As far as parking, I also believe we're looking out into the future, not today or tomorrow, but into the future. At present, in many parts of the US, and indeed many of the even heavier suburban areas, people are not taking personal cars anymore. I, I still do, but people are using car services and things of that sort. At some point, the mass transit system will be at a point where you may only need one car, you drive to the station, or you drive someone to the station, or you're driven to the station. My, my present position, I am in meetings in and out all day long, and there is no type of a bus or mass transit that would keep up with that type of a schedule I have. But that is what we're looking at into the future. I know that in also many areas, I, about three years ago, had a chance to do an architectural tour in San Francisco for a project I was involved with, and they actually took us to the top of buildings where they do have these parks set up there. Some of them are even bank buildings, office complexes, and you're in an office complex, anybody in that office complex can access that rooftop and have their lunch or have an outdoor meeting. So I appreciate that. I think that that type of distinction really will serve well the people who wish to use this. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards this evening?
No, we have not received any comment cards from the public.
Anyone virtually?
Yes, I do have two hands raised on Zoom, this time also Bruce Culp and Carolyn Raft.
Okay. Who was first?
I'll say Bruce Culp was first.
Okay, Mr. Culp, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you very much. So being the first resident in this North Montclair District, being the first resident Paseos, I've been watching the development in this area, and I'm not going to comment too much on how nice the project looks. That's, that's obvious, it's got a nice look to it. My problem, I think I was kind of saying a little bit about it in my public comment earlier, was something to do with how our, the notification is. And I know the city doesn't have too much to do about that, but I'm still going to complain about it, you know? This public, you know, letter was sent out to all the property owners within 200 or 300 feet. Now, if you think about it, in this area, within 200 feet of where this thing's going to get built, there are about close to 2,000 residents here. But if I look at each corner of this, where this is going to be built, there's a Montclair Police Station on the north, a fire station on the east, Trammell's own properties on the south and southeast. So that looks to me like about four or five people got notified out of several thousand people. So, you know, this property, you know, this notification process, where you're only allowed to, or only required, and I'm sure Mr. Diaz and Mr. Star are going to expound on their legal requirements and minimum requirements, but, you know, it just seems archaic, you know, property owners, who was that back in, when this was built? You know, there was a certain segment of our society that weren't even allowed to own property back when this country was first founded. It seemed to be minorities and people of color. So this notification, public notice thing was built on racism to begin with. And now we've gotten it even further, you know? Now fewer and fewer people are purchased, you know, are property owners and more and more residents. So you're excluding more and more people from participating in this, you know, ability to speak for or against these types of products, projects, I'm sorry. And so we've got thousands of residents, and I can tell you, as nice as Kendry is, they have built in some pretty significant traffic issues in this corner. I live, I'm looking right outside at Mona Vista now. I live right on the Olive Street entrance to Paseos. Right across from me is an entrance. Now, back when Paseos was built, there was a left-hand turn lane into Paseos off of Mona Vista. Directly across the street, there's an entrance to Kendra. And people, after they get off work at 5:00, come up north on Mona Vista and go into our left turn hand lane into Paseos and block our, our entrance into, you know, from coming south on Mona Vista. I heard screeches, car horns honking at least four or five times in the morning, and definitely been in close calls on that left-hand turn lane with people trying to turn into Kendra there. So again, if we'd had community meetings in this area, these kinds of issues can be addressed, the entrances could have been better built, or we could have put some, a way to, to not block them from turning left into the Kendra on that south entrance. So that's, that's a dangerous area now. And I actually talked about that when I first saw it, when that development was getting built, and everybody ignored me, and now, you know, one of these days, there's going to be a pretty bad accident right there. We're just waiting for it. I suspect that there's going to be more of that, so I'm just, you know, I wish that the council, before they voted in favor of this, got a few more of the residents involved, and maybe had some community meetings and talked about some of the issues related to high-density housing in this area, you know, the- You know, we need more bike lanes on the major streets, we need the street speeds to be lower, we might need a few more traffic signals in this area. There's, you know, several thousand people leaving every morning to go to work in less than 300 or 400 feet. And none of this is being talked about because nobody's being notified, you know? The only people being notified are the developers in this area. And what do you think they're going to do? They're going to wholly support this. I noticed that there is no requirement for any electric car charging areas in this, you know? I think all the automakers have agreed that by 2030, they're going to start making, you know, internal combustion engines. So we're going to have a whole bunch of electric cars, and you're going to build this development with parking, and where are people going to plug their car in at night to charge it? Apparently, you know, we're not going to be allowed to have electric cars in this development. I don't see any requirement for solar development, solar panels to produce electricity. Paseos just put it on there, and now my rent increased, you know, significantly as a result. You know, if it was put in right at the beginning, I wouldn't have had to go through this massive rent increase. So I would ask that they put in a requirement, not just, you know, the minimal, but make it required that they put in solar panels somewhere. I know you have rooftop, patio or whatever.
Mr. Culp, you're over the five minutes, so begin concluding. Thank you. Hello?
I'm sorry, that's it.
No, just begin concluding. You've only got, you're already over. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll stop there. You heard enough.
Madam City Clerk, is there anybody else virtually?
Yes, Carolyn Raft has her hand raised, so.
Yes.
I just unmuted her.
Mrs. Raft.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. You can hear me, right? I, ever since I was on the council and we started this North Montclair plan, I was very, very excited about it and kept thinking, I was so happy to see it finally, everything is getting started. I think this is a beautiful plan, and the best thing, I think, is we're not going to have on-street parking. It's going to be inside the complexes itself. And because right now, we have so many parking problems in Montclair to begin with. To address Bruce's concern, I know in the past, when we had a lot of electric cars too, we had different charging stations in the city. So I think probably when more and more people get electric cars, it will be addressed and we will end up in the city having charging spaces because I'm sure the governor himself will see to it. But I am very excited. I think the project looks beautiful, and I can't wait to see it get started. And I look forward to, hopefully, when it's finished, to, I hope they have an open house so we can go see it. So I thank you. I think the builder, I think it's great, and I can't wait to see more of Montclair, North Montclair being developed as well. So, because when I was on the council, we just started, discussing it, making plans. So it's nice to see it finally going into development. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Raft. And is there any, excuse me, are there any other speakers virtually? No?
No.
All right. I will then close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any further comments.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I will move the item as presented.
There has been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Martinez. All in favor? We have four yes and one absent. And if I may, when we were talking about the, so the motion passes, if I may, when we're talking about the history of North Montclair, I'm, if the mayor were here tonight, he'd be able to say this as well. I'm the only council member here who was on the dais when we approved the Montclair specific plan and when we approved the Paseos. At the time of the approval of the Paseos, we had people who said, it's too much density, it doesn't belong in our city. We had people say, there's too many cars, it'll create traffic problems. We had people worry about the type of person and people who would rent there. I could go on and on with some of the issues they brought forward. Nonetheless, we moved forward, approved that project, and today, it's a vibrant part of this community. So I'm not too concerned about the issues of density. I think we can handle it rather well, and we will. Thank you. That brings us to item number eight, our consent calendar. I will start on my left, the public's right. Councilmember Martinez, do you wish to pull any item?
I have no items to pull. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I have no items to pull. Thank you.
And now to my right, the public's left, Councilmember Lopez.
Just two, Mr. Mayor Protem. A chart C is in Charlie, number two, and number nine. C2 and C9.
Nine. Okay. Madam City Clerk, how do you wish us to take a motion for all the consent calendar, then come back to the other two, or just hear the other two and then motion the consent calendar?
I would just take the vote on the consent calendar first and then address the two items separately.
Then I would entertain a motion for the consent calendar, accepting item C2 and C9. Do we have a motion?
Who moved?
It is motioned by Councilmember Lopez. Is there a second?
Oh.
Hmm?
I moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Johnson made the motion, Councilmember Lopez made the second. All in favor? Motion passes for yes, one absent. That brings us to consent calendar item C2. Consider award contract tomorrow, Posta Landscapes, in the amount of 47,558 for construction of Fire Station Number Two Landscape Project.
Just a couple of questions regarding this. I believe initially, in a prior budget, it was 30,000 or 37,000 we had allotted for this, correct? What was the need for the approximate $10,000 increase? Just the bid that was submitted?
Well, yes. So the bids did come in high, higher than we anticipated, but the bids were also based on some expectations that we had from a previous analysis that was conducted years ago. We did not expect that the cost of this type of a project for landscaping would have increased the same way other projects has increased, but in fact, it has, in part because of labor-related costs, and certainly, materials and supplies have contributed to that. So again, we did not anticipate that. We thought about rebidding it, but we believed that that would not produce a better result. So we decided to recommend to the city council the bid packages that were submitted with the recommendation that it go to Mariposa, in part because we do want to move forward and get this project completed. We've waited far too long.
No, I agree, and I appreciate that. I applaud staff for acting on this and getting this, well, for me, it's been an eyesore to see the dirt and broken stone and rock in front of the fire station. I'm glad to see that it's going to be addressed. I just want assurances, again, the last time this item was before us on the agenda, that the developer, not the developer, the company will consult with Chino Basin with respect to drought-tolerant landscaping, at least take in their designs. I did have, I do have them in my car. I literally meant to bring them because I did want to see all the options that Chino Basin has offered in the design, Mediterranean style and all this and that. There's a lot there. I was going to bring it in to show staff. It's in the car, but nonetheless, I just want assurances that that will be done.
They were part of the process. In fact, a lot of the design work was done in conjunction with Chino Basin Water Conservation District.
Awesome to hear. All right, thank you. I'm done on that item, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Then we will go to consent calendar item number nine and then vote on the two.
The question I have on this one is that we have a contract with Blaze and Associates for grant-writing purposes, an all-encompassing grant-writing contract with that entity. Is there a reason why we need to contract with Ms. Misha Penn for grant-writing? Or is it not grant-writing? Is it just grant-management? Okay, then that's, okay, all right. That's what I just wanted the clarification on. All right. That's all I had.
Then I would entertain a motion for consent calendar items number two and number nine.
Since I pulled them, Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that items C2 and C9 be adopted or approved as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been seconded by Councilmember Martinez. All in favor, please vote.
Protem, that says C2 and C9.
The motion passes for yes and one absent. That brings us to communications. Department reports, it says none. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd just like to ask that the council meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations with our labor negotiator, Mr. Starr. And other than that item, I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to City Manager, Executive Director.
Yeah, I just want to respond to a few of Mr. Culp's statements earlier related to the Lexington Kendry Expansion Project, specifically the notification of public letters. He is correct. We are required only to notify property owners, and we do comply with that. We often expand how we make that notification. Law typically says 300 feet. We often go 500 feet or further. But we also require that, in a project like the Paseos where Mr. Culp lives, we require that the property owner post the notifications related to projects in public areas so that residents of the project will see what is being planned in the surrounding areas. It's very difficult for us to know who the tenants are because we don't have access to that information. So making the mailings to the property owners is the most feasible way for us to approach that. I believe he also indicated that there were issues related to street design, and I do want to remind the community as well as the city council that the city council recently contracted with Monopolisoid to do street design work on Monte Vista Avenue, Central Avenue, Moreno. We've already completed street design for Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue. We also be, we will be doing Ricton Street as well as the new Huntington Drive extension out of Claremont as product of the future Vulcan project that will be coming forward to the city council. During those efforts to do street design, there will be public input that will be solicited at that time. So there will be plenty of opportunity for residents to contribute to the process. Council will recall that when we did do the Arrow Highway and Fremont Avenue street designs, which we haven't moved forward yet because of the construction that is occurring on Arrow Highway, but when we did do those projects, before they came to the city council, we did have public meetings in which members of the community, particularly on the Arrow Highway case, the businesses on the south side of Arrow Highway, came to various meetings that the city was hosting to provide input related to the construction design related to Arrow Highway. So that opportunity will be available as we move forward with the design elements related to those streets. So that community input will be certainly welcome, and comments about bike lanes, traffic signals, turning issues, all of that will be addressed at that time. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. That brings us, that brings us to, and I will keep my comments short before we go on to the council. You have seen the newspapers where there is an increase in the new variant of coronavirus. We need to make sure we take the right precautions on this. You know what's best for you. I know what I prefer to do. But we need to look at that very seriously. It is expanding rapidly. I know LA County has some new cases, as does San Bernardino County. And the more precaution we take, the better off we are. I also would like to comment that I did attend the Gold Line JPA meeting last week. I am the Secretary Treasurer of the Gold Line JPA. We met, we discussed the project, what is going on with it. The consensus is always unanimous that it must get through to Montclair. There is absolute no question that everybody, every city along the line supports getting this to Montclair. It is our economic engine. It will help alleviate some of the traffic people are concerned about because it will enable people to take the Gold Line to some of the job, recreation, and educational opportunities due west of here. I believe we're looking at the potential of getting some $700 million in a trailer bill that we might be able to work on. I know I attended the event with Assemblymember Freddy Rodriguez last week where he honored residents from Montclair. I will, we will recognize them at a future meeting. But in that, I talked to him, as did, excuse me, City Manager Ed Starr, on the Gold Line, and he has given us his true assurances that he wants to see this completed through to Montclair. At that event, I know Councilmember Lopez attended, Ms. Richter attended. We had several Montclair residents showing up there. It was really a good opportunity for people to get together, to hear what's going on in the community, and also to celebrate from throughout that district, all the people who are doing good things and all the nonprofits. And because of the length of the meeting tonight, I will bring forward in the future the nonprofit of the year, veteran of the year, and woman of the year, and perhaps, Mr. City Manager, we could honor them at a future meeting. I know the mayor should be here as well. Keeping those remarks short, I will start on reverse order this time. My right, your left, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. July 6th or 7th, I can't remember the day, I think it was a Thursday, our junior division Montclair Little League baseball team was the last remaining team in our entire city in the league structure to make it to All-Stars, and they went the farthest. Unfortunately, Upland National defeated them in their last game. But I want to commend the junior division Montclair Little League men's baseball team for their success this year, for giving it their all and making the city proud, their moms and dads proud, their families proud, and the Montclair Little League family. Kudos to them, congratulations to them. Thank you to all the coaches for your dedication and commitment to those boys and encouraging them and instilling some long-lasting attributes that they'll take with them the rest of their life. Also, as the Mayor Protem stated, I attended Freddy Rodriguez's community barbecue on the 16th, and I would concur that perhaps the individuals that were recognized, that they'd be recognized here in chamber at a future meeting. One thing that I didn't realize, and it was like a duh moment for me, was Bolium got the business of the year. The Bolium is one of the last remaining traditional bowling alleys in the entire region, one of the last remaining ones. And there, unfortunately, COVID did away with a lot of them. They went out of business. Our still is standing and surviving, so I'm pleased to see that. They're a local landmark and an iconic place within the city. And kudos to them for the well-deserved recognition and distinction. Just something that I promised a couple residents that I would bring up. I'm hearing some more chatter and some complaints again, this time at Central Avenue and the 10 freeway. In the past, when I brought up the issues about the lanes and striping and the merging at Monte Vista and the 10, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and also thank you to the mayor for bringing those issues to the SBCTA, and SBCTA doing striping to mitigate those concerns, although I still think the problem still exists. But nonetheless, there's a demonstration of, and an effort to address and assuage concerns by residents and even those that visit and travel that particular part of the city. Now, Central Avenue, we're having problems with respect to northbound and southbound lanes, the left lanes on each direction. Those individuals not having adequate, they shouldn't really be paying attention, but nonetheless, adequate signage informing them that they're in the left lane and they need to turn onto the freeway depending on the direction they're traveling. If there's, there can be conveyed to SBCTA to kind of do a similar thing that they did on Monte Vista with the striping, or additional signage temporarily as it may be, on Central to kind of eliminate the traffic jam, the last-minute merging of motorists in the left lane to the right. I know it's a headache. I've come close to getting hit by individuals at that site as well. But I did promise those residents I'd bring the concern up, and I'd appreciate if staff can convey that and address that if possible. I believe that is it, Mr. Mayor Protem, on my end.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I just have a couple
I just have a couple of announcements. As you've heard me say before, and I'm going to say it again, we, you really need to get rid of all that clutter that's in your garage. The Montclair Chamber of Commerce is having another e-waste event this coming weekend. It is July twenty-third and twenty-fourth from nine AM to three PM. So all that clutter that you want to get rid of, just pull up in front of the Chamber of Commerce. You don't even have to gather the car. Just pull up in front, somebody will take the stuff off, and you'll be on your way. And the address at the Montclair Chamber of Commerce is eight 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 zero Benson Avenue, Suite one one zero, and it's on the corner of Arrow and Benson. Secondly, I wanted to share with you that I had an overnight with my two, my two granddaughters. I had forgotten how chatty little people are. Anyway, my six-year-old granddaughter was telling me all about her school and all of the things that they're learning in school and, you know, their activities, and she talked with great enthusiasm about this field trip that they went on, and it's important for me to note that they live in Rancho Cucamonga. But she told me that she went on a field trip to a water park, and she was really excited about going to this water park. And then she said she was perplexed when she got to the water park, and it's the park where Nana always takes us. So our splash pad has become a destination for small children to go. So really, kudos to Monica Haredia, all of the Public Works team, but particularly Jesus for the fabulous job they have done. It's not only impacting our community, but our local communities, our sister cities as well. And lastly, I want to talk about Habitat for Humanity. There is one here in the city of Montclair on Holt Boulevard. It's four seven three seven Holt Boulevard. We met with the general manager the other day. She came to one of the Chamber networking breakfasts, and she said that they're about to open the window for people to build their own homes. But she also said that she's perplexed because as soon as they open the window, they expect a flood of people to come in who want to build their homes, and very few people apply. So I would encourage those folks who are looking for their own home, whether they're, whatever their income source is, if they want to do that, to please call the Habitat for Humanity. The telephone number is nine zero nine three nine nine zero two zero two. That's nine oh nine three nine nine zero two zero two. There's a lot that goes into it. The, the person who will actually own the house at the end has some requirements that they have to meet in the beginning, and there's some activities that they have to do in the middle, but imagine if you're worrying about housing and you can build your own. So go apply. That concludes my comments.
Councilmember Martinez, and then I know Councilmember Lopez has another comment. Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. I don't believe that we have had a council meeting since the Fourth of July, so I just want to spotlight that the Public Relations Campaign was very successful this year, and that calls for service were down from last year at one hundred and thirty-two to this year at seventy-two. So I want to say that's half, but I'm bad at math, so. And also, I heard that the vendor fair was really successful last week. That coupled with the concerts and the movies in the park. I'm really happy that we're offering those events for our residents and also for businesses and churches to come out and get to know our residents as well. So thank you for everyone involved in putting those together.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you for indulging me. I did forget an item, and I feel bad for forgetting. Our former interim fire chief from two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen, Dave Corbin, will retire at the end of this month after thirty-three years of fire service, and I wanted to commend him on his service to the different agencies that he had worked for, but especially to the city of Montclair during that two-year time period. Chief Corbin began his career in the fire service in nineteen eighty-nine with the Upland Fire Department, promoted through the ranks from firefighter to engineer, captain, battalion chief, deputy chief of operations, and interim chief. And of course, from, like I said, those two years, he was with us in the joint powers agreement years when we did a quote-unquote merger. And he also served as deputy chief of operations and interim chief of both departments. He came to County Fire, that's where he currently is employed, San Bernardino County Fire, as part of the Upland annexation in July of two thousand seventeen, and served as a captain in the city of Fontana prior to being named, prior to being promoted, rather, to division chief of administration in December of two thousand seventeen. He is a hazardous materials specialist since nineteen ninety-one, holds a state of California chief operation certification, and is a two thousand nineteen graduate of the county's Management Leadership Academy Executive Development Program. He and his wife Kathy reside in Corona, and he is to be commended for his selfless service to the many countless residents that he saved and provided service to. So congratulations on your retirement, Mr. Corbin. Godspeed, God bless you, and may God bless you with the same kindness and care you've given to so many. Congratulations.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, we are adjourned to, to closed session. Thank you.